Recording in progress.
Good morning, everyone. We will go ahead and get started this morning. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers, as well as in, or on our county board website. There is also an automatic external defibrillator on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Marine Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Adam Scher.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, November 23rd, 2021. And item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, December 14th, 2021, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning, councilman. Paul Bellinger, 10215 Nutbag Lane or West Center Road. I wanted to show you the pictures of what was driving by our house this weekend 27 times. This seems to be acceptable.
There we go. Was that, or not?
Commissioner Garcia could look at it and see if that would be acceptable.
I got it. It's, uh, if we put it on, we should be able to get it now. Roger.
Sir, is this for the Board of Equalization?
I can get it.
This is, this is to equalize my voice to the mayor's voice. This is, this is what happens when we run a truck route through a residential neighborhood. This is what I pay taxes for. You wouldn't have this in front of your house, would you, Mike Friend? You wouldn't allow this in, in, in your front yard. Why is it in my front yard? Why is it that a dump truck 40 miles an hour can spew garbage and litter all over my neighborhood? 600 of my neighbors in James Kavanaugh's district, in Don Rowe's district, in Brinker Harding's district, got to eat all the asbestos tile off the floor of this residence that came by our house. How about the other truck that's here? You know, how about if we look at that? This isn't acceptable. I mean, the city of Omaha has two helicopters, and we can't find the dump truck going 40 miles an hour past my neighborhood? My neighbors that now have to have respiratory therapy on our taxpayer, our, our city and our county dime. You know, the people at 42nd Street that work in the large building there. These are the people that they're going to have to, you're going to have to allocate money for me to be able to breathe because Turley Trucking, Turley Trucking didn't care about the people that were standing on the side of the road, or the people that lived on West Center Road in your district, James.
Okay.
Right? Nobody cares. My taxpayer dollars, when I came here with a petition last time and I said, "Just stop the trucks running through my neighborhood." 11,000 commercial vehicles run through, is that acceptable for you, Mr. Garcia? Commissioner Morgan, is that acceptable for you?
I'd like to see the pictures.
Here. May I approach?
No, no, just, we'll show them later.
Okay. Well, maybe what will happen is KETV or somebody will actually run the pictures. Run the pictures. Maybe the State Patrol would come out and stop the dump trucks. They shake our house. I pay taxes to people that can't get the job done. Here's a perfect picture. Don Rowe has yet to put any of these people in jail, but yet Mr. Rurwing of the city of Omaha can come out and give me a citation for the stuff that I put in my front yard to stop this from coming on my property. Not okay. So here it is, February 25th. I got a court date. I got a whole trial for noise abatement. Vacate the truck route. How about just put the lights in my neighborhood to flashing red? How about just do that? 45,000 people pass my front yard? Imagine that, every day, the amount of trash that comes in my front yard that I've got to pick up, that my neighbors have to pick up. Our Omaha police, at $150 million, couldn't find the 27 trucks coming past my front door, and more importantly, my neighbor's front door. You wouldn't allow it in, at your front door. Mike Friend, you wouldn't allow it at your front door.
Thank you.
I'd like to enter this document in for the meetings minutes today. This is a problem. It needs to be taken care of.
Thank you.
You know, when a five-year-old can stand in my front yard and can look at this picture and determine that there's something wrong, a five-year-old isn't wrong. Larry Storer can figure this out. Why can't we, in government, figure this out?
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I apologize if I'm just passionate for my community.
I, I understand. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to resolutions. We have three resolutions. Is there a motion to approve and adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Motion passes five to zero.
We will move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh is presently absent. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Adam Scher.
Present. Item A, approval of minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, November 23rd, 2021. Minutes for the pre-board meeting on Monday, November 22nd, 2021 are also available on our website. Item B, approval of the claim submitted for payment process through Tuesday, December 7th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote. Could those on Zoom, please mute yourselves?
Commissioner Kavanaugh has rejoined us. Motion passes six to zero.
Next is the consent agenda. Items A through P. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote. Oh, your light's not on, sorry. There it is. Got it, got it. Go ahead.
Yeah, just real quick, there is a measure on here between Douglas County and Cox Cable. And I think Jerry Leahy, I saw Jerry Leahy here earlier, had a quick question about the extension of the existing Cox Cable agreement through December 31st, 2031, which is a 10-year extension. Jerry's here, someone can...
Jerry, Leahy, there is a question about the Cox item on the agenda. Could you please come forward?
Good morning, Commissioners. Jerry Leahy, Public Property.
Morning.
I, I couldn't hear up there quite.
Okay, sorry.
Commissioner, you have a question?
I had a question.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Oh.
Regarding item G, the extension of the existing Cox Cable agreement through December 31st, 2031. A couple of things. What is the agreement? I mean, I think a lot of us have Cox Cable, cable TV, whatever. And then, a 10-year extension? Why are we doing a 10-year extension?
Well, let me, let me back up to when Cox Cable came to Omaha in 1981. And they did two franchise agreements, one with the city of Omaha. But then there needed to be coverage outside the jurisdiction of the city of Omaha. So that was the reason that they approached Douglas County. So this is now our third extension. We have shrunk because of annexations, but it does generate revenue for the county. And it's a fixed revenue amount of 5% of gross revenue of Cox Cable in our jurisdiction. And the same would be for the city of Omaha.
So this is an extension of a franchise agreement?
Yes.
Right, for 10 years.
Yes.
Is there any adjustment in the compensation of that franchise agreement from the current franchise agreement?
There, there is, the, the restriction on, on the, there's no room to negotiate. It, it's a fixed, it's a federal communication act that sets the fees at 5%. So there's really no room to negotiate.
Right, right. It's the same as the agreement that we've been operating on.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. We have a resolution in I, and I just wanted to make the public aware of the fact that we're ratifying the new general assistance guidelines with increases in the amount of rental assistance. I don't know if Ms. Suick is here from general assistance, but I just wanted to make people aware that there are going to be additional benefits available to people who are in need in Douglas County going forward as a result of this resolution. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the consent? There has been a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next, we have a resolution, a recognition, a resolution to honor Supervisor Shirley Rice for her dedicated service to Douglas County and more specifically, the youth and family served by the Douglas County Youth Center. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brad Alexander, Douglas County Youth Center. Shirley has worked with me at the Youth Center since 1993. She's got, she's served for 28 years. I love Shirley. Her compassion, passion, empathy is really, for the kids and their families, is just an example for us all. We rode over here and all she could talk about is, "I'm going to come back after this, and I'm going to go around, I'm going to see this kid and that kid and this kid." I mean, it just never ends. And Commissioner Borgerson, you're going, about to do jumping jacks because she is going to be our next grandmother. And it's going to be, it's going to be wonderful.
Wonderful.
The people at the Youth Center did a, a really nice job of putting together a celebration for Shirley. And one of the things that Shirley mentioned at the, at the celebration was how much she appreciated Rondi and Wayne back there and, and their guidance and support, and that they'd made her, her better. And I didn't say it then, Shirley, but what I was thinking when those words came out of your mouth is that you've truly made all of us better. And, and I just can't thank you enough for, for your service. Her husband, Mike, is right there. And, you know, when you work in a 24/7 operation, the families sometimes, you just kind of take those things for granted, right, that you got to juggle around Thanksgivings and Christmas and holidays. And, and so, Mike, thank you so much for, for sharing Shirley with, with us. She truly is just a blessing. I know she has a few words that, that she wants to say, but...
Bear with me. I am the Youth Center private. I can try to drop it by hand.
But thank-
They're good to you.
Thank you so much, Shirley. I appreciate you.
Thank you. And I couldn't have done it without Brad. And I remember when I, years ago, when I used to always felt like I wanted to, oh, okay. When I was having difficulties making some time decisions or disciplining, whatever, and I would go and talk with Brad, and Brad says, "Shirley, that's why we hired you. Because you are a good person. And you are good from your heart. You are you. Just stay who you are. That's why we hired you, because of who you are." And I always remember that. And then I had Rondi, and sometime when I made a few mistakes and I would cry, and Rondi said, "Shirley, we're going to make you strong. You're going to be such a strong supervisor until you're going to rock it." And I'm like, "Okay, Rondi, I'm going to make you guys proud of me." And I feel that these 28 years, I try to make a positive difference in the juveniles' lives and, as well as staff. I was fair. I love the children, no matter what crimes they've done in life. I didn't judge them. I wasn't there to judge them. I was there to be an advocate for them, to be their grandma. I started off their girlfriend. I became their mom. I end up being their grandma. And I honor that. To me, that's such a privilege to carry that honor of a grandma. Since I am a grandma, I have over 100 and something grandchildren. They were all my grandchildren. And I love them all. And I will miss them. And that's probably the hardest thing about leaving. Like I told Brad and Rondi, I love the kids unconditionally and how they love me. And I thank the county, because you've all been good to me. Even when I was going through hard times or my losses or whatever, everybody just supported me and just like, hey, it's all good. It gave me the support and the love, and I thank you all, the county, for 28 great years. And I will be the grandma, and I might just come back and be sitting up there with you guys. Okay? I'm just kidding. But anyway, thank you all. Appreciate you. Thank you.
I just have one more thing. You're going to see our recidivism drop now because we actually have kids that violate and do things to come back to the Youth Center.
Oh, yes.
Just to spend time with her.
Yeah, that's one more thing I wanted to mention, too.
Our recidivism is going to go down.
Right. Well, let me mention that one more thing. We let kids, we, we release them, and they're gone. And within three or four days, they come back. And I'm like, "Where are you back?" They're like, "Ms. Rice, to be honest with you, we get more love here. We get our snacks. You made our healing lotion." That's a story in itself, but I'll always, you know, kind of bless them with the healing lotion. They're like, "You all gave us love, whether it was tough love or what. You guys gave us love here. And we get more love here than we got at home. That's why we always came back and to be with you guys." And you can tell, because they were just as happy when OPD bring them in. They're like, "They want to come back to the Youth Center." And it's like, so we're doing something positive with these kids, you know? And, and I think that's our reward, because, you know, we don't judge them. And we are there to just love them and care for them, because some of them we'll probably never see again in life. So while they're with us, we're not paid to judge them. We're just paid to take care of them for their safety and their welfare and to love them. And I will go to heaven knowing that I loved every last one of them. And I sleep good at night because I was their grandma. And you know how grandmas are. You know, we, we, you know, we could always give them back to their parents, but when they're with us, we can spoil them, right?
That's right.
And that's what I've done.
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay, just a minute. We have a couple of comments. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thanks for all your many years of public service. You know, the children are our future, as they say, and you have made an investment of your life in making that future better. So, thank you, thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Enjoy your retirement, Grandma.
I'm enjoying it. I am getting plenty of sleep. No more 5:15 getting up.
You've earned it. You've earned it.
I think I have. Thank you.
Shirley, we do have a resolution, and we will present that to you after we vote on it. But really, what you have said are the words that should have been written in this resolution, because you are, you are the, the highest example of a county employee and working for the betterment of our children, who again, as you expressed, come to us at a time of need. And you have provided that. And honest to gosh, I could not be more excited, because before Brad said that, I was going to ask you if you would consider coming back to be our foster grandparent for the Youth Center, because I know that not only because of your words do you get something out of it, the kids are absolutely blessed to have that unconditional love at a time that they need it the most. And so, on behalf of the Board, we could not thank you more for your dedication and your service and the love that you have given our kids that visit us at the Youth Center. So thank you so very much.
Thank you.
And stay there for one second while we vote. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan? Please vote. And if you would, could you come around and we'll give you the resolution. And thank you personally. Yep.
Motion passes six to zero.
Just walk right around in the front and shake everybody's hand.
I couldn't hardly sleep last night, like, oh, God, what do I do? My husband said, "Just make it short, sweet."
That's right. And you did.
We're going to give you a kiss.
And you did.
Thank you.
Did you want a picture, Dan?
You know what? Yeah, let's, everybody come in front here and get a picture.
Oh, okay. Me and my t-shirt. Okay, just come right over here.
Michael?
All right, I think I got everybody. All right. Okay. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. And three, two, one.
And let me get one if you could look this way. Five, four, three, two. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Okay. Okay, see you again. Thank you. Oh, we all remember you. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Well, I would love to adjourn on that note, but we have unfortunately more business. With that, citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Larry Storer, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Today, I'd like to read something in honor of all those that gave their lives at Pearl Harbor. I'm kind of surprised there wasn't a resolution on the agenda for that. But I'd like to read this. Printing it out at the last minute, there might be a couple of words that I messed up because it didn't show up. But today is a day of remembering those who gave their lives in the service to our republic at previous times, even prior to 1620, when the pilgrims sailed to America to escape tyranny and religious persecution, et cetera, and began an experiment of self-government, which failed because of a socialistic attempt to make everything even, and distributed evenly, or communal living, as we call it. But it led to free enterprise ultimately, and to self-direction, and to our independence from tyranny once again. And our unique, and to our unique, compound constitutional republic, not a representative democracy or democracy. Many of those forms of government have gone by the wayside and are currently struggling today. Marxism, Islam, and one-worldism are the current major threats to our culture. These forms of government are antithetical to the founding of our country on religious principles and have no place in our culture, our history, except when we were founded on Christian principles and our constitution, which is unique in the world. But we do practice non-denomination of freedom of religion. The current national debates and, in my opinion, propaganda coming out of people like Black Lives Matters, ISIS, CARE, AMI, the tri-faith concept, and CRT philosophies that we hear from a lot of people, a lot of leaders, even in the chambers of our civics government, state on down. These are actually a dishonor to all who have gone before and will be going again, probably very soon, for our brand of freedom. So I call on the Douglas County Board, the Omaha City Council, the school boards, and the state legislature, et cetera, all of our congressional representatives also, to reaffirm, reaffirm your oaths of office and to lend an ear not to the associations of communities this and communities that, national community associations, even local community partners and colonists and universities with their best practices that get the ear of our representatives rather than the citizens' ears when we are attempting to petition our government at the podium. We are restricted. They are not. You represent us, not them. Lest you forget the Pledge of Allegiance. Those are not meaningless words. So you can do no less than to honor and hold So you can do no less than to honor and hold up for others to see that the brave patriots and families who have given or do risk to last full measure.
One minute.
To do less, to do less is tantamount to the cancel culture craze that is sweeping this country, and it has to be stopped. Please insert this into the record of testimony on this day, Tuesday, December 7th, 21, 80 years after the day of Pearl Harbor, as part of the resolutions that may come in the future. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to presentations. We have our COVID-19 update and COVID-19 vaccination plan update presented today by Ms. Carol Allensworth from our health department.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I think I'll take this off. You can hear me better that way. I hope you all had a great Thanksgiving.
Yes.
And that you've got some good plans coming up for the holidays. Um, I'm here today to talk to you a little bit about where we're sitting with COVID-19. Where we're sitting with COVID-19, our risk of transmission in Douglas County is still high. Our, our cases per 100,000 based on a seven-day rolling average are sitting at 405.4. That's in comparison to 284 right before Thanksgiving. And when you take a look at our seven-day rolling average number of new cases, we're sitting at 330.9. And that's in comparison to 231.7 before Thanksgiving. Now, when you take a look at what we're seeing overall, as of yesterday, the total number of cases was 95,239 with 868 deaths. Unfortunately, I just heard today that 477 new cases were reported this morning. So our total just went up to 95,710, which will be reflected on the dashboard later today. The last time we had that many cases reported in any given day was in December of 2020. So, um, our cases last week increased by 54%. So you can see that in this graph here in the center. You can see the steep increase that we took. So we had 2,290 cases last week in comparison to 1,482 the week before. This is the highest weekly total we've seen since January of 2021. The highest proportion of cases right now has flipped since the last time I talked to you. We're seeing the highest proportion in 20 to 34-year-olds at 26.3%, followed by those 0 to 19 at 25%. And if you take a look at this graphic, you will see that the, it's pretty much of an increase when you take a look at 20 to 39-year-olds. That's where we're seeing some pretty steep increases. As of yesterday, the number of cases that have been reported in Douglas County schools for the last 14 days was 465. That is a rate of 4.2 students per thousand. One of the things I did want to bring to your attention this morning is that, um, for those schools who have been universally masking since the beginning of the school year, we have seen clusters in those schools, about 29 of them, and 18 classroom closures. However, in schools that are doing optional masking, we have seen 54 clusters and 44 classroom closures. So just something I wanted you to be aware of this morning. As far as hospitalizations are concerned, I think the key thing that we all need to keep in mind is that our hospitals are full. And, um, we're sitting at 293 hospitalizations as of last night. Three of them are pediatric with 15 suspected. So that'll probably be added to our total today. And that's the highest number of hospitalizations again since December of 2020. There are 50 events that are being utilized for COVID patients. And again, that's the highest since December. Our med search capacity, we're sitting at 85% occupancy, and that really varies even during the day. It varies from day to day and even during the day. Our ICU is at 90% capacity with 30 available beds as of last night. Our pediatric intensive care units are at 94% capacity. Again, this is a regional look across all systems, but we need to keep in mind that, you know, even though we might think we see a little bit of leeway there when you're talking about 85 or 90% capacity, many of our hospitals are at capacity and unable to take new patients. So, um, then I think one of the good things that's happening here in Douglas County is our vaccination rates. So let me just get there real quick. So if you take a look at individuals 12-plus, let me just get here. You know, the last time I talked to you, individuals aged 12 and older were eligible to receive vaccine. At this point in time, for those age 12 and older, we are sitting at 72.6% fully vaccinated. Since that time, of course, kids age 5 to 11 were approved to receive vaccination. And at this point in time, we're sitting at 65.7% of our population 5-plus, fully vaccinated. If you take a look at the population as a whole, which includes those that aren't eligible, then you're looking at 60.9% fully vaccinated. One of the things I did want to show you today is, you know, when you take a look at those 5 to 11s, we've provided 18,595 doses of vaccine to kids that are 5 to 11. And that represents 24% of our kids 5 to 11. And we are actually sitting now at 8.8% of them fully vaccinated because they're just now getting into the time where they can get their second dose. So, and, you know, a lot of people, we've had a lot of questions about booster doses. How are we doing with booster doses in Douglas County? Those who have, we've given 99,672 boosters to, boosters or third doses to Douglas County residents. I expect we're going to exceed 100,000 today. And 62% of our residents, 65 and older, have received their booster. And if you take a look at the, you know, 18-plus who are all eligible for boosters, 31.7% of our population has received a booster or third dose. So I think, you know, we're making some inroads as far as vaccination are concerned, vaccinations are concerned. So clinics, um, we have multiple clinics that are scheduled this week. We're in several different schools, middle schools and one high school. We also have a clinic at Claire Memorial today, the health department on Wednesday, Omaha Children's Museum and Antioch Baptist Church on Friday. I did want to make a comment that Christmas in the Village went very well on Sunday or Saturday, whatever day that was. And we gave, um, 284 doses during Christmas in the Village, and we were very excited about that. The next thing I wanted to talk to you a little bit about is Omicron. The Omicron variant has been identified now in 19 states in the United States, including Nebraska. The six cases of the Omicron variant that were identified in Nebraska, that was outside of the Omaha area, it was southwest of Lincoln. And these are travel-related cases, and they're all in one household. So one household member traveled the week of Thanksgiving, and the traveler was great. They got tested immediately upon return. And the local health department, which is Public Health Solutions southwest of Lincoln, they worked quickly to get the entire family tested as well as getting the sequencing done to determine if this was in fact an Omicron variant, this person was coming back into town from Nigeria. One was vaccinated out of these six. Five had only one, and then they weren't boosted. And five had COVID one year ago, but were not vaccinated. None of the cases have been hospitalized. So given that cases, you know, have been found elsewhere in the United States, it's, it's not surprising that we've seen it in Nebraska. And we're continuing to do surveillance to look for the Omicron variant. Current laboratory tests can detect the Omicron variant. Both antigen and PCR tests in our Nebraska Public Health Lab is able to sequence that virus variant to determine if it's Omicron. There's still some important unknowns about Omicron. There's mutations on the variant that could potentially affect transmissibility and also how severe it is. But, you know, what we're starting to hear is that Omicron might be a little more mild, but it's also very transmissible. So we'll be getting more and more information as we go on, and we will be releasing it as we get that. Vaccination is expected to provide, um, protection against severe disease and hospitalization, even though the protection may be less, but we don't know that at this time. So prevention measures are the same for Omicron as they are for other, you know, the native COVID and the COVID variants. So our, you know, we're sticking with our recommendations, which are, if you're vaccinated, get boosted. If you're not vaccinated, get vaccinated. Wear a mask in public indoor spaces and crowded areas with a lot of people. Stay at home if you're sick and get tested and isolate at home for that 10-day period of time if you're positive. And then follow isolation and quarantine guidelines. So that's my update for today. If you've got any questions?
Thank you, Carol. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you for this. Just a few, I think you might have mentioned this, the positivity rate?
Oh, our positivity rate is sitting right around 12 to 13 to 14%. So, um, that again, I forgot to put that in here, that again, is on our summary page, and you can see it in the right hand in over here. So the end of this...
Yeah, I see that. Just trying to get the exact numbers a little...
It was, um, data report, it was 12%.
It looks like it's gone up a little bit in the last few weeks, right?
Yes.
With everything else, it looks like, everything else.
Yes, just like our case count has gone up.
The cases, I think I heard you mention in a couple of categories are as high as they were a year ago.
Yes.
Right?
The number of new cases that are being reported, especially today, we haven't had that many cases reported in a single day since a year, you know, since in, in December of 2020.
That's troubling. And did I hear you say that the highest age category of those new cases is the 20 to 34-year-olds?
Yes. That, the highest proportion of new cases is in 20 to 34-year-olds. Previously, we were seeing the highest proportion in 0 to 19-year-olds, but that, they've been overtaken by that 20 to 34-year-old group.
And the second highest category would be?
0 to 19.
And, and a portion of those are not vaccinated, you know, the under fives are not available for vaccination yet, right?
Exactly.
So you mentioned there have been some class closures in schools around our community? Are those closures because of positive, kids have tested positive in a particular classroom?
We look for clusters or outbreaks that are associated with one another. So if we have a classroom where it appears that transmission is occurring within the classroom, and we generally look at, you know, three or more cases, then the recommendation is, at least in an elementary school, to shut the classroom down because the damage has already been done. I mean, there's already been potential transmission occurring. When it happens at the middle and not high school level, it's recommended that close contacts who are not vaccinated, that they should remain at home for a period of time, you know, for the quarantine, um, until such time that they either test negative or they fulfill a full 10 days of quarantine. So high school and elementary are handled a little different because elementary kids are together in the same classroom for an extended length of time.
And has that phenomena of class closure gone up as well?
We saw quite a few class closures occurring, like right before Thanksgiving and right after Thanksgiving this week, you know, when you came back after Thanksgiving. It's very difficult to determine after people have gathered with their families and done big events if the transmission is actually occurring in the school. So we're watching that very closely. We have not had, um, you know, any this week, but that doesn't mean that that's not going to happen.
And usually...
One minute.
My colleague Commissioner Boyle goes into this, but I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the hospital situation, the binocular situation. We might have to come back in the second part, but it looks like, I, I think you said many of our hospitals are at capacity right now?
And having difficulty either accepting transfers or getting people into a room. So there's much longer waits in the ER. And, you know, the, the rooms will open up intermittently during the day, but it's just, you know, they just don't have enough beds.
So based on these two graphs, it looks like our, our overall metro Omaha hospital occupancy rate may be knocking on the door of an all-time high. Is that right?
Could be. You know, it obviously dropped a little bit.
Yeah, but it's up there.
And it's seesaws, yeah. So it's, it's higher than it has been. Now, remember, that's among staffed beds.
We'll come back. Thank you.
No other lights? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
So in addition to that very high hospital occupancy rate in our community, the patients in the metropolitan area hospitals on ventilators has spiked as well, right?
Exactly.
So we...
And so we're, we're similar to what you were seeing in December of last year.
The policies that you outlined regarding the recommendations of what, what we should do are, above all, get vaccinated. And if you're vaccinated, get your booster shot if you're eligible for that. Then, um, as far as the mask policy goes, could you outline us, for us, you know, what, what the mask policy that you're recommending is?
You know, we're consistent with the CDC on the mask, unmasking. And we recommend as a health department that if you are indoors or in crowded spaces, that you do wear a mask.
So it has facility for us that you would recommend masks?
If, you know, um, if you're in a more of a crowded place, you know, where there's other people.
Right, if you walk through this facility, the civic center and the courthouse, it's, you know, relatively crowded, is a, is a busy place, people going in and out all the time. You recommend wearing masks?
Like I said, we're consistent with the CDC's recommendation on that.
And in these offices that we have all throughout this building, which are pretty, you know, enclosed and fully staffed, you'd recommend wearing masks?
Are you talking about an individual office, or are you talking about-
The offices in this facility, in the civic-
That accept, you know, clients walking in, correct?
Right. Well, I mean, do they have clients, or do they have just-
Yeah, well, I'm just trying to understand whether you're asking about a person in an individual office where they work themselves, or if you're talking about office as in vital records.
Is there a distinction between, you know, crowded offices and crowded offices that are open to the public?
No.
Okay. Offices that have full staffs and are open to the public should wear masks, right?
In indoor places. And this is a recommendation until you drop below substantial levels. We, to get into the moderate level, we would have to get down to just a little, right around five hundred and seventy cases per day. Sorry, I'm the wrong one. We'd have to get into this moderate level when you make a change on masking, because masking is recommended in areas of high transmission and substantial transmission. And it would take us to be having like five hundred and fifty, five hundred and seventy cases per day, or per week, reported to drop us down into that moderate category.
Right. So we're in the high category now, which would indicate, you know, do all these things. Get vaccinated, get your booster, wear a mask, stay at home if you're sick, get tested, stay in isolation for ten days, all of that, right? Going forward, I know that it's early days in terms of this new variant, but is there anything different that you know that we should be doing based on the new variant?
At this point in time, we're making the same standard recommendations that you just reiterated. And if anything changes, we would, you know, let people know. But that's where we're at at this point in time.
Sure.
We're coming into the holiday seasons, I mean, actually, we're in the holiday seasons, and I think that, you know, probably some of this is related to people got together at Thanksgiving time. We see this, you know, when people do that. Is there anything special about the holiday upcoming that we should observe to be as careful as possible and try to slow the spread of the pandemic?
You know, I think, you know, just the standard things we talked about. And then if you're having a large gathering, you as a group could decide, you know, we'll test before we, you know, there's testing available for at-home tests, and if people are really concerned about it, they could, as the people who are gathering together, to have a test prior to their gathering.
Okay. There is, I believe, some vaccination requirements coming down from the federal level. Are those-
Time.
We'll come back. Thank you.
No, that's it for lights. I just want to reiterate what Carol said in terms of your recommendations. We cannot mandate, we have not mandated, anyone to wear a mask or get vaccinated, but we strongly encourage that as recommendations that we follow from the CDC.
That's exactly right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Thanks for being here. With that, we will move to committees. The first is the Finance Committee with just the budget report as presented. We then have the Human Resources, which is the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. We have a resolution approving the Douglas County's preliminary 2020 legislative priorities. We had a committee meeting to go over those, and this again is just the preliminary ones, those that were carryovers, if you will, from the previous session, and then our two new legislative items that we'll be working on. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next is a resolution setting the salaries for various Douglas County elected officials. And this resolution is listed below, represents a three and a half, three and one-half percent increase each year for the next four years. And this is for the county attorney, the county sheriff, the county assessor register of deeds, the county engineer, the county clerk, and the county treasurer. Is there a motion to approve? Any question, there's a motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Commissioner? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Just so the public is aware, these two items have what you could call fiscal impact. So I'd ask, I think, Joe, you have these numbers. The amount requested for the resolution setting the salaries for various Douglas County elected officials, what's the amount of that request, Joe? Oh, Patrick?
It's just three and a half percent of their salaries. We haven't, I've been asked to, I've not been asked to calculate what the economic impact of the elected officials' salary increases would be, so we don't have that information.
I thought we went over this in the pre-board hearing yesterday and had a number of approximately the economic impact of this.
I think that was for the non-union?
Yeah, that was for the second agenda item.
Okay. Then on that second agenda item, what would that amount be, the setting the salaries for various-
One point six million.
Thank you.
And as I was reading off the elected officials that we're setting, it's not the county clerk, it's the clerk of the district court. Larry?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette, 68132. I'd like to point out, under your legislative agendas, that there apparently has been a change in the Nebraska legislature rules for citizen input. You can find that change on their website about public hearings. I'd like you to read that, because it sort of goes in the face of a lot of the rules that we have in this chamber, as well as the city council, in regards to citizens appearing.
And I appreciate that, and I'm sorry that I didn't get you, but we're past that item?
But the implications are, it's maybe something that you need to consider here.
We will definitely look at that.
Also, and the implication is that citizens should be able to have back and forth.
Okay, thank you.
Whereas, the things that are written on your documents in the city council implies, you guys do not want to have back and forth with citizens.
Thank you, Larry.
But they are inviting us to do that, so maybe we should do that here.
You're out of order now, Larry.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right. With that, we have a motion and a second to approve item three, the salaries for the various Douglas County elected officials. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
The next resolution is setting the calendar year 2022 wage increases for various non-union county employees. And this is, again, a three and a half wage percent, a three and a half percent wage increase, again, for those non-union employees. And this would be non-union step plan employees, county employees who are on the county's non-union wage plan, the sheriff captains and district court bailiffs, the district court and juvenile court, full and part-time, non-union county employees who are not on a step, the CMHC, our Community Medical Health Center medical director, and all board-certified psychiatrists that are employed by our Community Medical Health Center, the county attorney and public defender employees, and the chief deputies, elected officials, chief deputies, shall receive the following increases in pay. This was after in consultation with each one of these elected officials. The assessor register of deeds, three and a half. County attorney, chief deputy, four. The engineer, three and a half. The sheriff, three and a half. The treasurer, seven percent. The clerk of the district court, three and a half. And the clerk comptroller, three and a half. With that, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments on these salary settings? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We do have need for an executive session for legal advice and contract negotiations. Is there a motion to go into executive session for those purposes? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Motion passes six to zero.